Good evening and welcome to the
Recording in progress.
... meeting for August 28th. Commissioner Anthony, can I get you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and have everybody else stand?
A pledge of allegiance is required by the city planners, the city planning committees, and the city residents. It's true we are a community, which is safe. On your conscience, on your ground, the city is responsible for the greater things that we try to accomplish.
City Planner, can you please do a roll call?
Certainly. Chair Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Balma.
You're trying to find my microphone. There it is. Here.
Commissioner Anthony.
Here.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
And Commissioner Malik. Let the record show that five of the six planning commissioners are present. We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Communications on matters not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any slips to speak?
Chair Rosales, we do not have any slips.
Great, thank you. Anybody would like to come forward and you'd have three minutes. This is again items not on tonight's agenda. All right, seeing nobody come forward, then we will go to approval of our minutes from our last meeting, which was on July 24th. Any discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Morrissey for approval of the July 24th minutes. Second?
I'll second.
And a second. Commissioner Dodds, go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Anthony abstaining.
Great, thank you. Moving along, we do not have anything listed on tonight's consent calendar on our agenda. We also do not have anything listed under transportation items, so we'll go to our public hearings. We have one item tonight. Item four is consideration of tentative map, development plan, and density bonus for a 13-lot residential subdivision referred to as the Loma Alta terraces. We need to do disclosures. I'll start. I drove by the site actually today, got staff report and a number of emails as well for it to be by staff. Vice Chair Morrissey?
I walked the site, read the emails, and reviewed the documents from staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodds?
I'm familiar with the site. I've driven by the site just recently, read the staff report and the submitted emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma?
I also walked the site, which by the way is a beautiful piece of property in a very nice neighborhood, so that was really welcoming, and got all the staff reports and all of the community and outreach.
Thank you. Commissioner Anthony?
I've got the staff reports and community outreach emails.
Terrific. Good evening, Dane. Looks like this is your item. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, Dane Thompson with the Planning Division presenting tonight's project, the Loma Alta terraces. Here is a visual of the project's site, which is a two-acre vacant parcel that spans between Loma Alta Drive and Crouch Street. The site is located within the residential State B zoning district and within the Loma Alta neighborhood. The project is a request for three entitlements, a tentative subdivision map or tract map, and a development plan with density bonus. The tract map would subdivide the two-acre lot into 13 lots ranging from 2,800 square feet to 13,000 square feet. The development plan would be to construct 13 single-family residences from two-floor plans, 11 of which would be three-story 3,200-square-foot units. The other two units would be two stories and 1,600 square feet. Associated improvements include a private cul-de-sac, widened public streets, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, site landscaping, and a stormwater biofiltration basin. The project is proposing to reserve one of the units to very low-income households, which awards them additional density over what would otherwise be allowed. Here you can see how the site would be subdivided with access coming solely from Loma Alta Drive. Out of the 13 lots, the average lot size would be around 5,500 square feet. Here's the site plan of the project. As you can see, the two-floor plans, 11 of which would have a three-car garage in a tandem configuration, the other two units would have a two-car garage. Here are elevations for the 11 units referred to as Housing Product A. These units would be three-story units with various visual accents and significant articulation. Housing Product B, the two other units, would be similar with various visual accents, significant Here is the conceptual landscape plan for the project. As you can see, most of the landscaping is on the corners of the project site as well as lining the private drive. I included some images here to help you visualize the proposed landscaping. The project is proposing two different types of trees, Brisbane box trees and strawberry trees, shown there to the right. Two types of ground cover would include Japanese honeysuckle and Huntington carpet. They're also proposing four types of shrubs that are not included. Associated improvements include widening Loma Alta Drive and Crouch Street up to nine feet. Curb gutters and sidewalks would be included on both frontages. The additional width would provide the availability of street parking where none exists today on both frontages. This table shows the density bonus calculations for the site. It should be noted that all fractional results are rounded up with density bonus projects. So the base density for the two-acre site and the 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size results in nine units rounded up. By reserving one unit, or 11% of the total units, to very low-income households, they are awarded an additional four units rounded up to a total of 13. That comes out to a gross density of 6.5 square feet. For reference, very low-income households are defined as making 30% to 50% of area median At the proposed level of affordability, the project is awarded two concessions per state law. The city cannot deny a request for a concession if it would result in a tangible cost savings to the project. Only one concession is being requested, which is to waive the city's undergrounding requirement. Regardless, staff does not believe that much value would have come from undergrounding at the site. Per the subdivision ordinance, if pole is within, a utility pole is within 100 feet of the project site, the utilities would have to be undergrounded to that pole, which is the case for the northern X shown on this image. But if there is no pole within 100 feet, like the X or the utility pole south there on the bottom, a new pole can be constructed at the edge of the property. Essentially, they would be removing the pole at the red X there and installing a new pole where the... Per state law, density bonus projects can request unlimited waivers or reductions in development standards if they would physically preclude the project. The city must allow these waivers unless it would result in a specific quantifiable adverse impact based on objective written health or safety standards. The waivers requested are shown in the table to the right. Noteworthy waivers include lot size, setbacks, and maximum height for a few of them. The project would comply with the city's parking requirements as well as the state's requirements specifically for density bonus projects. State law asserts that density bonus projects are not inconsistent with the general plan or zoning ordinance as of increased densities. With that, the project is consistent with Policy 1.16 of the land use element, Policies 2.2, 3.7, and 3.8 of the housing element with regard to affordable housing. The project is subject to the development standards of the RUB zoning district, and waivers have been requested to build the project at the proposed density. Staff has determined that the project would be eligible for a Class 32 infill exemption as justified in the memo attached to the staff report. The project meets all the criteria for the infill exemption, including being consistent with the general plan and zoning designations of the site, being surrounded by urban uses, permanent impacts to habitat would be less than significant, and there is no sensitive species or habitat on the site. Also, there would be no significant effects pertaining to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and the site can be adequately served by all essential utilities and services. The applicant hosted a virtual open house on March 21st, which was attended by around 10 members of the public. To date, staff has received 12 letters of opposition with common concerns including parking impacts, increased traffic, noise, runoff, inadequate infrastructure, and aesthetic needs. Safety was a common concern at the outreach meeting, so a stop sign would now be included on the private drive where it would meet Loma Alta Drive. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission confirm issuance of a Class 32 infill exemption and approve the project as proposed. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and will say a few quick words, and will both be available for questions.
Great, thank you. I had a couple of questions, Dane. I was looking at the schematics, the design plans. I didn't see where the storm drain basin is. I see where the inlets are, but where is it on the map for the project?
Chair Rosales, here probably shows it best. The main part would be that lower left corner, and I believe the other corners are also stormwater facilities.
Got it. The other question I had, you touched on it just real quickly, but there was a traffic study done, and I guess because of the average daily trips, it was screened out because it was pretty light. Is that a way to characterize it?
Correct, Chair. They didn't provide a full study, but the project was screened out for VMT. It's located in a low VMT area, so it doesn't have to do VMT analysis. The proposed 130 daily trips is also under our threshold for requiring a local transportation or LOS.
Okay, thank you. One more question. Commissioner Balma, go ahead.
Thank you. This project being such a different project for the neighborhood, I mean, this is like impacting the neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood, pretty significantly. I noticed on both Crouch and Mesa, no signs were posted. Were they posted at one time, and people might have taken them down or whatever, but that's kind of important because this is a project that affects this neighborhood in a significant way. So I just was wondering if there was something that maybe changed with the requirements.
Commissioner Balma, that is a requirement when we first check the project. I did do a site visit today, and I also noticed that the project signs were down.
Yeah.
The applicant's saying that there's a lot of vandalism at the site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can check the project record and see if they provided a photo of the documentation on site.
Commissioner Balma, if I could add to Dane's response is that, you know, that's part of the city's enhanced notification policy. It's to apprise nearby residents that there's an application on file. Other means by which the community was let, made aware of the project was the notice of application that property owners within 1,500 feet would have received in the mail, and also the notice of the public hearing by evidence of the amount of correspondence received for the project. The media property owners must apparently be aware of the project site. It's pretty common in our community, a notice of application signs often get vandalized, torn down. Sometimes they're maybe poorly installed, and we had some recent winds. Sometimes the weather brings the signs out. So there's a number of reasons why the sign may not be present today. It's something that we try to keep an eye on and make sure that they're there, especially ahead of a hearing. And to Dane's chagrin, he found that the signs were down today.
I just wonder how long they were down. I mean, I don't live in that neighborhood because people, I mean, as I drove through the side, both Crouch and Mesa, it's a very quiet street on Loma Alta, and Crouch is a little bit more busy. But, you know, there's people that might not live within the 1,500-square distance, but it's going to affect them with the visual of what's going to happen here, right? So it's changed the single-family neighborhood to a higher-density type of project. So I just think that's important in this. Like, I sometimes don't even bring this up when we have this happen, but in this one, it's important, I think, because of what it is, right? It's changing the landscape.
I agree.
That's it for the moment, Dane. I believe you said the applicant was here. I'd like to do a quick presentation. If you would come forward and give us your name for the record.
Scott Darnell with Loma Alta Terraces, applicant. And you, kind of commissioners, for your time. We are bringing a project that will hopefully allow new families to make their roots in Ocean Side, and we are also providing a low-income family that would not previously have been able to have any opportunity in the neighborhood in Ocean Side. So we believe housing is a human right, and the only way to have relief on affordability is to provide supply. And we're here to, we've worked for two straight years with planning staff, who's been great on all levels, and we'd love to see this project approved unanimously tonight.
Scott, before you leave, one thing I noted in the number of emails that we received was that the architectural style of the development was not really in concert or consistent with the neighborhood. And I wonder what was the thinking in terms of going with a whole different sort of approach that was not consistent? And do you do it typically with developments if you go into an existing neighborhood?
Sure, I can touch on that. We went with a kind of coastal contemporary look, which is fairly common these days in terms of new construction, but it's tough if you go to a neighborhood that's got a variety of home styles. I mean, there's some hundreds, a lot of years old to very new, so we didn't really pick up on any single style that existed, and we did our best to create a look that would hopefully be modern in time.
Fair enough. Commissioner Balma?
Yes, my first question, I'm an architect also, so I really like to look at sites from the ground and just see how you cite the project. So my first question was why site, why have the entrance off of Loma Alta Drive rather than Crouch?
Yes, so in the extensive civil undertaking we had, the utilities come from that side, so it was required to have the entrance from Crouch.
So it was all driven, there's no utilities on Crouch Street? There's no sewer, water, nothing there? There's probably power, I know that, we saw the lines.
Can I call on my civil engineer?
Okay.
The sewer is on Loma Alta. There also is one on Crouch, but what we have to do is we'd have to bring the sewer down to Loma Alta, so we would end up having to have an easement through the property.
Right.
Yep.
Well, I could also tell that you got more units doing it this way, but then you also have to come up with a lot of retaining walls. So that's another kind of question I had, as far as these retaining walls are right along the houses. It's like the retaining wall in the house sits right on top of it. It looks like it from the plans. So I kind of, can you like walk me through some of these retaining walls and like, they say they're up to 10 feet, I guess, it said on one of your waivers?
I believe the tallest one is six feet.
Six feet.
Approximately, but it has a terrace effect. Obviously, there's a geographical change to have a nice, you know, monolithic wall where you're not duplicating a wall close to a building wall, where you have a terrace level at a building, and then you have a separate visual element where the next home will be lower. And so if you're looking, you're not looking at your neighbor's windows, they're a little bit above you, and it's kind of a terrace effect going down. Great.
So the walls really aren't on the building wall, they're actually, even though the dotted line shows it like the same at the building wall, it's actually set away from the wall?
The property line is outside of the building wall, but it's, the retaining wall is integral to the stem wall of the foundation. So it's one single wall, which is kind of a nice terrace, like.
So then pretty much it's just one straight up?
Yes.
So from the retaining wall, four feet, then you go up another 36 feet or whatever the height of the building is?
I think it's total, the height is total from the ground, so it's only 30 feet above the top of the wall.
Hmm, it's a three-story building though, right? Some of these, three stories?
Yes.
How do you only?
Yes, they are three stories.
So 30, so you have lower ceilings then? They're only 30. If they're only, if the building themselves are only 30 feet, you said, right?
So that would be three 10-foot.
So that's what that is, okay. Even though you got a waiver for, I think it said up to 36 feet on your waiver.
Yeah, so you could measure from the very bottom of the retaining.
Of the retaining wall, like the ground. The other thing I also noticed was that all, you know, you have these property lines, so when you buy your house, you're going to have your other neighbor's trash cans on your property. So you're going to have to have some kind of like little kind of working, kind of together neighborly thing because your property line divides the two lots, but you're actually giving that to the next neighbor for their trash cans and such, right? Is that just going to be something in your CCNRs or?
Yeah, I think we can handle it within the management of the lots, but typically I would see your trash cans in the front of your property in your garage.
Yeah, I saw where you did all that. I have lots of questions because I now get into this stuff. One of the things was on lot number six, I was looking at that one particular unit because it's a three-story, and it also kind of like, kind of looks into the neighbor's backyard. And I know that a lot of people don't like that. Like, we've had lots of projects where that's been a big deal, and plus it's only three feet from the actual property line. So I thought, well, I'll look at your elevations, and I saw that your elevations had no windows on that one side, but then I couldn't find it. It's like, it showed one elevation with no windows, but on your floor plans, it shows windows. So does your floor plan not, is not right, or is your elevation not right for the units on, for lot number six, which is a floor plan for number A, I think it is? Lot, yeah, it's floor, it's Plan A. Plan A shows windows on the back, but on your elevation, it shows no windows. I just wanted to know which one is it?
The elevations are more conceptual. We need to elevation per.
Sir, if you would, if you have an answer for us, would you please come to the mic?
This is Glenda Kimbrell. I'm with Richard, Richard, correct me. It's more conceptual, the elevations. We didn't like design each elevation per each floor plan. It's kind of a basic look, aesthetic. So when plans are actually designed, they will reflect, elevations reflect the actual floor plans itself.
Okay, because I just thought that would have been maybe a nice gesture if you didn't have, if you just move your window on those bedroom, the bedroom wall, which is on, you could move the bedroom wall window so it wasn't going to go right into the neighbor's backyard because it's right there.
We'll consider all that.
You need to consider some stuff when you're doing something this, you know, intense to a neighborhood that's single-family. Just kind of, those kind of things kind of go a long way sometimes, you know? Anyway, that's one thing I saw that I thought you could probably work on. All right, I can go on, but I'm going to let somebody else talk.
Well, all good, all good questions, Louise. Why don't we go to the public, and then you can maybe hear some things and then generate some more questions? So, again, it's a public hearing. Thank you, Scott. Public hearing, public is invited to provide their input. We usually have slips already submitted, but you're more than welcome. If you didn't submit a slip to come forward, go ahead and start calling folks.
Thanks, Chairman Rosales. We have seven slips this evening, so please come forward in the order I call your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. State your name clearly, please. The first speaker will be Lisa Price, second, James Burnett, third, Glenda Kimbrell, and fourth, Mark Devine.
Commissioners, I'm here tonight to ask for your careful review of this project. My name is Lisa Price. I live at 238 Crouch Street, and right next door to us is my husband's aunt, who is 94 years old and who has lived in the home for 57 years. She's directly across the street. None of us are against development. I'm building an ADU in my yard, so we're not against development. But what we do want for you to consider is responsible development. I know the city's up against the wall with all the bonus density requirements and things like that, but we would like you to give consideration to the community. And what we have heard and seen in the presentation is waivers and waivers. And according to the rules, the developer set up a 30-minute Zoom call at 8:00 on one morning in March. I have called the developer no less than 50 times. I've emailed. Dane has tried to help us get a meeting with the developer. This is a partnership, this is a collaboration that we have in our community, and this isn't going that way. Many people are concerned about safety over on Loma Alta, and they should be because there's a blind corner. Maybe we can do speed bumps, maybe there's other things that we could do, maybe we could extend the sidewalks, because they're going to put a sidewalk in on Crouch Street, but it's a sidewalk to nowhere. And we have so many people that are driving by, pushing baby carriages, kids riding bikes. It's dangerous. And this many more houses, build eight houses, build eight houses. We would love for low-income people to come into our neighborhood, but don't saddle us today with 13 additional houses. It's just not right. I want to go through the waivers because that is one of the things that, you know, I know some of these are bonus density, and I've read up and I've tried to, you know, get up to speed on it and understand it and whatever. They want a, they want a variant for lot size. Our lots are 10,000 square feet. They want to take them down to 3,000, somewhere less. The width of the lot, the depth of the lot, the width-to-depth ratio, the setbacks, the front yard setbacks, the side setbacks, the corner setbacks, the rear setback, the driveway length, the bonus density again that I've already... Anyway, please postpone this decision. Let the city, the neighbors, and the developer get together, sit down, and let's talk about this. A 30-minute Zoom call one time is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name is James Burnett. I'd like to pull back a slide. Real quick, pull up your overview of the lot in question. But first off, I want to thank you all for the chance to be here and speak, ma'am, especially for your attention to detail on your architectural background. Okay, here over there. Okay, first off, the term development usually implies that something's being improved. And look at this lot on the north side, that's a posted stamp. This isn't an improvement. Loma Alta's been around as the historic, it's listed on all the websites, it's your historic first pioneer development in Ocean Side. And I don't have the time to get into the background, and they bought the lot, and they're entitled to certain right and privilege to develop it, to make it better for the neighborhood. However, there's a lot of things that aren't being taken into consideration. If you look at the drawing, you can see the shape on the ground where there's been a lot of foot traffic, right? You can see there's a lot of traffic. Why? Because we have an unrecognized amount of foot traffic in the area. And if you want to pull up one of the other pictures that shows it in greater detail, there's one without the lot lines, but it shows just how much kids play in that field. It has been used. It has been used for more than 20 years as a rite of egress for kids to go from Crouch Street to get to school. They ride their bikes there. They play with the remote control cars there. And they bought it knowing this. Now, to take and make a cul-de-sac out of it restricts the right-of-way for kids walking to school. It reroutes everything. I know I don't have a lot of time here, but anyway, this is my first time coming to a town hall public development meeting, if we'll call it that. But these need to be reevaluated for comparisons, the right-of-ways. We talk about the density bonus. The city is supposed to make concessions, but what about the residents of the city? And what about the people that live in this neighborhood that have lived there for decades? And my mother was born in Oceanside. My grandmother lived in Oceanside. We have ties that go way back. And I know I'm out of time, so I'm going to stop here. But I, I'd like, one last thing is please look at the electrical upgrade. Last year, we had rolling brownouts, okay? Although Oceanside wasn't dramatically impacted, we're building houses everywhere and we're not upgrading the electrical grid. We are in other communities, but thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Glenda Kimbrell and I'm at 146 Loma Alta Drive. And basically, what I want to do is just review. I did send a letter, which I'm sure all of you had received hopefully a few days ago. But I just want to review a little bit because what I understand is if we choose to oppose the project to the city, we can only bring up issues that we bring up tonight. So I want to make sure we bring up all the issues because as you've heard, and it's been very well spoken before me, that as residents of that area and that community, we oppose the density and the design of the project. It said that, in the letter that we received, it says it does not have potential impact on the environment. We take serious issue with that. We would like to ask for the traffic study to be completed. I understood you correctly, Dane. You just mentioned that the traffic study wasn't completed. We would ask that that traffic study be completed. And I don't know how 11 four-bedroom and two five-bedroom houses cannot impact the neighborhood and the environment and the traffic and the parking, the density of the homes. Again, we give the developer and we respect the developer to be able to develop his property, but have the neighbors in mind. And my question is, Mr. Darnell, do you live in Oceanside? Does he live in Oceanside? Is he planning to move into one of these homes? Our impression is, is that he wants to develop, get the most money out of it, and then leave, leaving us in the wake of a terribly designed development. The fire, because of the density, the fire damages, the lack of infrastructure, as we talked about, the sewer, the drainage, the water, the poor home designs, which have been discussed already. And we realize, we have a very eclectic neighborhood. We have an old, established neighborhood. And yes, you can't find one, one or two houses that maybe look alike. But what you are putting in this neighborhood is nothing like anything within the established Loma Alta historic site that we are. The other thing that I have brought up is within approximately 100 yards north of this development on Loma Alta Drive is another high-density proposed development with 10 homes plus the opportunity for ADUs. Well, okay, so within, we're looking within 100 yards of each other, two extremely dense developments. And the design of their homes is similar to what we're looking at here. So keep that in mind as you're saying yes or no. But as you're saying yes to these developments, the impact that they have on the current resident. Also, I would just like to say the 30-minute Zoom meeting on March 21st at eight, between 8:00 and 8:30 is not sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mark Devine. I'm at 134 Loma Alta Drive. And one of the main things I wanted to talk about was the, they didn't take into account the easement. The gentleman before me, we were talking about it. I've been using that property for eight years to go from Crouch to Loma Alta. And I'm not the only one. I mean, there are dozens of people every day making a path across there. Also too, one of the things that came up, I'm not sure if you're aware of the city council, but our mosquitoes this year have been epidemic. And they're talking about putting in a water basin, water trap, which is just going to increase the amount of mosquitoes in the area. They have not been addressed. It has not been, it has not been taken care of. And my wife can't even go outside. And that's how bad it is this year. Glenda brought up the fact that there is another development that's already approved a couple of hundred yards north of this one. Has that traffic been counted in on this traffic also? I don't believe so. I think that, that this was just by itself. And it just seems as if it's poorly suited for the neighborhood. I think the, the elevation on the homes is atrocious. And there's quite a few places you guys can go with this. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Our next group of speakers will have Victoria Settle, William Nelson, Sean Settle, Donna McGravy, sorry if I pronounced that improperly, and Michael Kenner.
Hi, my name's Victoria Settles and thank you all for coming here. And I've been, lived at my 210 Crouch Street for 27 years. So I live right across the street from, and invite you guys all over, if you want it, for breakfast, I can cook it for you so you can see what it's like to be over there in that neighborhood. And they said they've had two years of designs in there. I've been there. They could have came and asked me. I would have helped with that. So I just want to, everybody here has their job. They're, they're really smart people here. And thank you guys for coming. I don't want to go over my minutes. I would have gave them to Lisa.
Thank you. Next speaker. You have, you may have to call him again.
Sean Settle is next.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Sean Settles. I live right across the street, 210 Crouch Street. First thing, I won't go quick because I don't have a lot of time. First thing, there was never any signs posted as far as that. We did get notifications in the mail, all of us did. There was never things posted across the street. There was, one of my neighbors did post some signs in opposition that were torn down by this man. And he tried to take away, take them away in the back of his truck and I stopped because they were not his property. Other than that, that's all I'm going to say about the sign. The other thing is, the design of the project doesn't fit the neighborhood like some of my other neighbors have said. One of my neighbors calls it ranch and sea. That's kind of the feel of our neighborhood. We've always had big lots and a lot of space and it just has a feel of kind of like ranch and sea. And we have 10, we have to have 10,000 square foot lots in order to develop. We've always had that seven-and-a-half foot setback. Going back to three-foot setbacks is extreme. That's just too much. That lot was designed for five houses. They're trying to put 13 houses on that. Not only that, the overload on the sewer, the sewer line going to Loma Alta, that's, that's 13 houses jumping in. They've had problems in Loma Alta sewer. And, and you have to think about the chain reaction this is going to cause because if you allow this variance, then all these lots that are close to 20,000 square feet on our street are going to start chain react. They're going to start wanting to put two, three, four houses on them. And that's going to build up and that's going to add up. And there's no improvement on the sewer anywhere in this project. So that's something you need to think about. When you just start letting things go because the state mandates these things we have to do. You know, you guys are here to protect us from that. That's what, that's why we hire you. And you know, we trust you for that. And so I just hope you'll take the time and take a little extra time and think about this. And I went over to Fire Mountain. I saw they had signs posted there. The developer had posted signs over there and they were still there the whole time. Nobody tore them down. I didn't see anything like that right across the street from my house. So that's, that's all I've got to say. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be William Nelson, followed by Donna McGravy.
Hello, I'm William Nelson, 138 Loma Alta Drive. I was coming down the street to date here and I saw cars on both sides of Loma Alta parked on the street from Wall Street all the way down to Canyon. That's pretty much normal at this time. The, the other thing is that the elevations, which I just saw for the first time tonight, look very boxy. They look like apartment buildings that are just separated by a very little bit. I would be in favor of something more like eight units or 10 units with an entrance on both sides. Because if you're going to do a development like this, it would be better to get traffic coming in and out at two different ways. I don't know if I missed the boat on that or whatever, but if I was doing a development, I would certainly want to give people more than one chance to get out of that. The, it's incongruent with the neighborhood. The foot traffic issue is also a real thing. People come through there constantly. If you had two entrances, you could still walk your dog. That would go a long way to help us. I know you'd have to lose a couple of lots, but that would also help us. If you want some support from the neighborhood, that would be a good way. You're probably up against it with the state of Sacramento telling you, you've got mandates that you've got to meet. And I, I'm sympathetic with you, but I need two of you to vote and disapprove this project as it is in its present form. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker would be Donna.
Hi, I live at 2405 Mesa Drive. I've lived in that neighborhood for 82 years. I've owned my own home on Mesa Drive for 50 years. I'm very pleased to see the progress being made. I'm, I'm really happy to see the contractors come in and do something that's reasonable to me anyway, and affordable. Where are 29, 35-year-old families going to live? Where are they going to live? They want, they want $700,000 for most of the homes in that neighborhood right now. It's no longer a mom-and-pop residential neighborhood where I paid $23,850 for a 10,000-square-foot lot. It, not there no more, ever, never will be. The, the thing that I'm, I'm concerned about and I keep hearing is the walkthrough traffic with the kids. Those marks in that field, those little circles in that field that look like a racetrack have been a track for the kids to ride little hot carburation dirt bikes around for years and years in that neighborhood. And the one across the street from it as well on, on Loma Alta. There's another vacant lot on the other side of the street that is now also being considered for 13 homes. That's a miracle. I'm very happy about that. I'd love to see those houses come in. They're going to have some nice ocean views. And they couldn't live in a better neighborhood in the city. I'm telling you right now. I know every neighborhood in this city. I know who lives in the neighborhoods in this city. I don't live in the eastern, north part of town. I live a mile and a half from the beach and I can see the pier. That's pretty darn good for a $23,000 beginning. But I absolutely promote this. I, I'm very grateful that they're considering doing affordable residential homes in my neighborhood for young families. And the people who live there now obviously have young people in their homes. I have, I have grand, four grandsons who already want to live in my house. And I have parents of theirs who want to buy a home in that same house, neighborhood if they can. And they're saving $20,000 and $30,000 to get that opportunity. That's a darn good start on one of these houses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final, final speaker will be Michael Kenner.
Hey, wonderful people. Mr. Darnell's original proposal said that his, the housing would be inconsistent, would be consistent with the existing neighborhood. Well, you're surrounded by some really nice folks who have a small neighborhood. Most of them have been here for 20 years. Three-story monstrosities. It's sunk down in the middle of our neighborhood. It's an attack on our values, on what we hold to be part of being Oceanside. And it's kind of insulting really because it's, in a way, perhaps it's going to be a future swamp. And 13 lots, 26 people, 26 cars, maybe 30 cars, maybe 40 cars, blind people or have cars. And where's the parking going to be? They can't apparently park on the street. They have to park off, off the street. And then the bottom floor is for a three-car garage, a two-car garage. Those are going to be ADUs in a heartbeat. So then you've got 39 people, 39 cars. There's going to be break-ins and a lot of things. It's going to just change the quality of our life and our neighborhood. And it's, it's just sad to see this kind of progress on steroids. You know, pull it back a little. This lot is really a tough bill. There's all kinds of grading issues and some stuff where they could maybe say, okay, we could do eight decent houses, maybe two-story, have them look like houses instead of some tenement building in Barcelona. And it might be, it might increase the quality of our life, the visual look of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, we've run out of slips that were submitted. It doesn't mean that you can't come forward. If you did not submit a slip, come on forward. Like the others, you have three minutes. We don't have your name, so if you could give us your name.
Yes, Kathy Doobie. And I'm actually in the backyard of that proposed building. It's actually my backyard and I have a quarter acre there. I've been there 27 years. Just built a swimming pool. And I mean, I'm not against building new projects. That's not built for people to ride their motorcycles. They've done it for years, but that's not their property either. I understand they're going to build. I just, I don't want three-story buildings looking into my backyard. I've had this privacy for all these years. And my husband's gone and my daughter's there with me. And yes, she needs to buy a house too. And everybody said it so eloquently. I just scale it back. I don't want people looking in my backyard, not that close. So two stories may be reasonable. More lot sizes, I've got a quarter acre. Other neighbors have two acres. I know not everybody gets that, but that's what we have. And I've worked a long time to keep it. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else before we close the public hearing? Okay, not seeing anybody come forward, so we'll close the public hearing. Louise, you want to continue with your questions? I have some comments or just maybe a question, but you, you want to start us off?
Well, one that was brought up was kind of interesting. I was just going to ask the staff, as far as the traffic study that was done, was, was that taken into consideration, the other approved project down the street? And maybe even future projects that you know can be built, the lots?
So Commissioner Obama, to answer your question, a project of this size does not warrant a traffic study. It doesn't generate enough trips to warrant. It doesn't generate enough trips to warrant a traffic study. So we're not going to impose the requirement of a traffic study when it doesn't. For VMT purposes, it's screened out from the requirement. The threshold to do a VMT analysis is 1,000 ADT and this project has 130 ADT. It's about a little more than 10% of the requirement. With respect to an LOS, a level of service study, that would require over 500 ADT. And again, we don't meet that threshold.
But even with the other projects, it still won't get to that.
It still won't.
So you're still, you guys have already looked at all that.
So this represents a fraction of the existing ADT in the surrounding roadway network.
One, one thing I heard that I want to just bring up, and I was kind of doing my little sketches on your site plan here, was a lot of the neighborhood said that this is kind of a, well, it's a unique lot. You go from Crouch to Loma Alta. It's kind of a neat thing to have that, that access for everybody that has been using the access on someone else's property. But you could actually have a street that goes from Crouch to Loma Alta and not lose any of your, your 13 units. You could still have 13 units. I just wondered why you didn't, maybe if you would have had some more neighborhood meetings, face-to-face neighborhood meetings, you might have come up with that as maybe before you even started drawing anything, you might have actually thought about something like that that might have been a good thing for the neighborhood to have that street go through. Because it would make the traffic less on one of the, it would, it would spread the traffic out to both streets and not just impact the Loma, Loma Alta Drive, which is a very quiet street now when I drove that compared to Crouch. So I just wondered if that's something you guys could consider and also go back to possibly, I mean, like again, you didn't have the signs and you had a Zoom meeting that didn't seem to work out very good and which I, you know, Zooms are fine. I like doing my meetings on Zoom too, but when you're doing something like this, you need to have a face-to-face. And this is kind of a very important thing for a lot of people. So I would just, I wasn't looking for, I mean, I'm very much pro-development. I'm not against it, but I just think this is a great piece of ground. It's a great, what you guys are doing is a good idea as far as what the kind of units you're putting in. All that's fine. I'm not saying take the units away, but you could put a street there and still have 13 units. Anyway, I'm just throwing that out and maybe you could kind of look at that. Your drawings are kind of like not brought up to speed anyway. I mean, there's elevations that don't even reflect what you're building. So it's like there's things here that, you know, you haven't really put a lot of time into them yet, so maybe you could just kind of go back and try it again. I don't know.
Yeah, Louise, I think you're hitting on some of the things I was just going to have a commentary about, so I'll jump in. First of all, we're seeing a lot more of these types of developments. Well, we've got a community that's been longstanding, existing, and you've got maybe a vacant lot that's been there a long time and, and somebody comes in and purchases. And I'm pro-development too. And certainly California and the area needs housing. That being said, we're seeing more and more of these. So we're seeing this in Fire Mountain and other areas. There has to be an understanding from developers that if you're going to do that and you're going to bring in a project that's very different than what exists there, you really have to be good at your outreach because you've missed the boat here. This is kind of like a case study of how not to do it. So I feel like, you know, kind of piggyback on Louise, you haven't done your homework completely here. Yeah, you have a project and we could approve it, but it's missed the mark on so many things. And it would behoove you to sort of pull back and revisit it with the community. Maybe it's the same project that comes forward again to us, but you haven't spent enough time with community to get their, their confidence and the buy-in in what you want to do here. So that's, that's my take on this. I mean, there's a lot of other things I could touch on, but that's essentially my takeaway from this. Mr. Morrissey, go ahead.
So I, I think that the law is the law. So a lot of the things that were brought up, there's, there's nothing we can do about that. It's legal, the setbacks, the concessions. But what I noticed, this is of the projects that come to this dais, this is one of the, I would say this was not very complete. I, I actually agree with both of you. I mean, it's not like, you know, are the elevations right on the elevations and not, you know, on the, the site plan? So I, I think that a second try at this might be the way to do it. I did hear, and the same thing, yeah, I'm saying the same thing you said. I thought that the, the presentation, the visual presentation could, could have been better. I think it could have been, more could have been done. And then we did hear that the, the interaction with the residents, and I have to tell you, the residents that I heard talk to are very reasonable. And unfortunately, I don't know why there, there could have been more collaborations, what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree. Our other commissioners, Commissioner Dodds or Anthony, anything to add or any thoughts?
Well, not much more to add other than this could have been, the plan could have been a lot more accurate. We're talking about the height levels in, with the housing, but my main concern is outreach and how you've communicated with the community involved that's directly impacted. At best, this gives the appearance of being disingenuous. You have one meeting at 8:00 AM. I'm not sure how many are retired and could make this meeting, but if I were living in that area, I couldn't have made it. Even if you gave one meeting at 8:00 AM and then did another meeting at, say, 4:00 PM, it gives an opportunity for people to actually make the meeting. It, at least it gives the appearance that you're trying to reach out to the community. But I do agree, agree with Commissioner Obama, something like this that impacts the neighborhood like this, there should have been an opportunity for face-to-face as well. That's my concern is just community outreach. We need to do better. Giving one meeting and checking the box just doesn't do it when we're impacting neighborhoods.
Any further discussion or questions for staff or anything, or anybody want to make a motion? I like to see this project revisited. I know applicants made their investment and a lot of time to get to this point. You've heard what we've said here. I think what we've said consistently is that it doesn't really reflect, I think, what the community wants. Yes, you have a right to develop your property, but I think to be appropriately engaged with the community, it really should be looked at again in whether that might look at, look like city planner. Can we, I know we can, but I'm just sort of asking if we were to send this back to staff to engage, re-engage with the applicant and they ask the applicant to re-engage with the community, what does that look like in terms of timeline and, and coming back to this body?
Chair Rosales, members of the Planning Commission, it's a, it's a fair question. It's a good question and I'm not sure if I have a, a good answer for you. The enhanced public noticing is not a statutory requirement. It's a city policy that's a direction from council on how to engage the community. Our, our staff reviewed the community outreach presented and deemed it to be sufficient for this project. That being said, I, there's clear direction or clear comments from the public and clear direction from the Planning Commission that perhaps the community outreach wasn't genuine enough and there's more efforts to be made. One option that's available to the Planning Commission is you could direct staff to, direct the applicant to further engage in community outreach. I'd have to check with the city attorney to make sure that we're not violating any requirements of the Housing Accountability Act by doing so. Another aspect to bring up is that as a density bonus project, our discretion is limited and that, that discretion is even limited to the design proposed. We may not think highly of the design. Nevertheless, that's what the applicant is proposing. And so we may be limited on what changes we could ask the applicant to make. That's something else I would have to confer, the city attorney to confirm what I'm telling you is accurate. We do, I have, I am aware of other municipalities mandating similar requirements from developers and those developers were found, or those communities are found to be in violation of the density bonus, state density bonus law by requiring a revisiting of a design. The design is what stands on its merits. To the extent that it does, it complies with the development standards in place. As an example, this zoning district does allow for three-story buildings up to a maximum of 36 feet tall. Seemingly, in reviewing the plans here right now, it looks like the, the houses comply with that. I think staff was conservative in, in directing the developer to seek a waiver of the overall building heights to account for some of the retaining walls that were pointed out by the Planning Commission. So that's what I have to offer to you with respect to potential direction that the Planning Commission may give staff.
Yeah, no, that's fair. So we have the discretion that wouldn't go against the state law to ask or propose that it go back for consideration wherein the developer at least engages with the community and they have their conversations about whatever they think maybe should be modified or re-looked. That, that's not counter to the state law. We have that discretion to say, you know what, let's do a pause here or reboot and just let you folks talk and then bring it back. So that's my first question. And the second is, if that happens, again, I don't want to hold this up. If it comes back to us, are we talking about a month, two, three months before it would come back to us?
So we did, and I'll look to Dane to confirm this for me. We did deem the application complete, correct? So we, we backed it upon, we held a public hearing within the statutory 60 days of deeming it complete. I don't think we'd violate the five of public hearing mandate of the Housing Accountability Act by directing the applicant to, to further engage the community. So I think we'd be safe there. I'd have to confirm that with the city attorney again. But I believe we, we're allowed to have five public hearings on this item total according to Housing Accountability Act. And this would be the first of this potential five public hearings. We may have to account for appeals that go to the city council. That's something else to, to consider it of.
Sure.
But I think that we still left with four meetings after this one. So I think we're safe in that respect.
Okay. So I mean, I offer that as, as an idea that may kind of move this to maybe where it needs to go, fellow commissioners, that the engagement happens. All the, all the things we're touched upon, we don't need to sort of spell those out. And I think that conversation can happen if they just re-engage. That's my thought, but if you want to put it another way, go ahead.
Is the formal way called design without prejudice? Is that kind of like what you'd say, we're not saying we don't, we're not denying the project, we're saying that the project needs to go back and come back again to us. We're denying without prejudice. Isn't that kind of the way then?
Deny without prejudice would require a new application to be submitted. I imagine prior to that being done, the applicant would appeal this, that decision to the city council.
All right.
We'd also probably get a letter from HCD if we denied this project.
All right.
And I think that's something we'd like to avoid.
I don't think that we want to go, but there is some things that can maybe happen with the community outreach and maybe they can talk a little bit more about, like, like what I just talked to you about is about the streets going through. It doesn't take away from 13 units. I don't, why, you didn't even think of that. Maybe there's more street improvements. Maybe that's the cost factor. So you might have to put like another entrance in off of Crouch and that might be another stop sign. I'm not sure how much that costs, 400 bucks or something. So there's probably some costs involved. But I mean, you wouldn't lose 13 houses. You still have 13 houses and you'd be able to still keep that neighborhood connection. And it's kind of a better design for traffic too, I would think. But anyway, the neighborhood has said some of that. I think two or three of the people stated that. And I think it would be worth your while to just do one more little pass to just, you know, get them behind you. This is a, this is a project that's a game changer for their neighborhood and there's going to be another one right down the street. So you're kind of setting the pace. You guys are starting this thing out, so let's start it off right and, and have the people behind you.
Louise, if you'd like to turn that into a motion?
How do we, how do we say it? We're not denying it. We're saying we want to have.
How do we need to make our motion so we're not?
I'll look to.
Okay, go ahead.
Chair Rosales, I'll look to the city attorney to confirm this, but I think what we can do is you could direct staff to continue to work with the developer to further engage the community and we can bring this item back within 45 days or so.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a pretty straightforward motion, but.
Does that seem reasonable?
Barbara, what do you have for us?
Yeah, so I mean, it's basically like a continuance to continue the hearing to gather more, more evidence and more information and, and without, without making a determination one way or the other, so.
Great.
And I think it'd behooves the developer to have a meeting someplace in the subdivision so people can come. I mean, it's not COVID anymore, so it's, it's, it's nice to be able to, to, I think you would do better and would have had a better outreach had, had you done that. I think that, you know, and this density bonus thing bandwagon that's going on, I mean, there needs to be more collaboration. And I, you know, I think the, I think what was said is that there had to be an easement. Well, so what? There's easements all over. So as to, one of the reasons why maybe the street didn't go through, but I would, I would suggest that, that there be more collaboration. So I'm going to make a motion that there be a continuance, that the, that staff work with the developer with the community to come back to us in 45 days with something that, that it, it might be more palatable. The law is the law and, you know, the subdivision, you are great people. And I've never heard a subdivision so reasonable and so polite, so kudos to you. And I, but the law is the law and, and we're just going to have to deal with that. So if you do, if you could find something to work together, that makes it way easier for us.
Yeah, and I agree. I think the law is the law, but there's, there's a way to go about it so that the two parties in this case and other parties down the road have at least some working agreement that, you know, we have something decent here. So I don't feel like that was done, so I'm fully in support of that motion. So we have a motion?
Yeah, I was going to ask one more comment, sorry.
No, go ahead.
If you could work with like, you know, the siding of your houses, right? Like you said, that one that showed, I thought there was no windows on that wall would have been perfect because it lofted right into their backyards at three stories. That would be the perfect elevation that you showed on one of those plans right here with no windows. So maybe you can revive, like just kind of show that maybe lot number six might not have windows on that back wall that would loft into someone's backyard. I mean, just kind of looking at the neighbors and looking where their houses are sited and just trying to work with them. I mean, it's like, again, you guys are the first ones in their neighborhood, so you have to have it, you have to do a little bit more work, I think. It's kind of like, what do they always say, the first one in is always the hardest, whatever.
Set the bar.
You're setting the bar. There you go.
And we're going to continue having this sort of tenor, if you will, with other developments that come into existing communities where it's density bonus, it's incongruent perhaps with the community style and characterization. So we're going to continue to have this theme as projects come forward. So resetting the bar and making sure this one goes right is consistent with how we're looking at these things. So thanks for all the comments from the commissioners. We have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Great. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Chair Rosales, if I may add, if you can set that date so it's a date certain, so we don't have to re-notice the project, that would be preferred.
Okay.
So that 45 days would roughly be the meeting of October 9th.
Okay.
So if you could include that in the motion, that'd be great.
Great. So the motion is to continue to 45 days certain, which is around October 9th. We have a second, so if no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the vote, the motion passes unanimously.
Good luck and I hope you have a good conversation.
Yep.
That concludes our public hearings for this evening. So we have nothing listed on our agenda for, under the appeal of city planners' determination and nothing under discussion items. We are going to take up the discussion of the calendar for the Planning Commission for 2024. Folks, if you could quietly exit, we have one more item on our agenda we need to get Thank you and we'll see you in a bit. So Planning Commission calendar for 2024. City Planner, you want to go through that?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Rosales, members of the Planning Commission. Agenda item number five is the Planning Commission's consideration of the 2024 Planning Commission meeting calendar. It follows the same schedule with the exception of perhaps.
It follows the same schedule with the exception of perhaps in November of having Planning Commission meetings on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. So this calendar was, as presented, was approved by the OPAC for their meeting dates. We typically have a joint calendar for the three boards that the planning division represents, and so this is what's before you today. Let me, please let me know if there's any questions or comments regarding the proposed dates.
Looks good to me. Do we need a motion, or we just kind of nod our heads and say this looks good?
I think you just nod your head and say this looks good. It's nothing formal.
Let's nod our heads then, okay. Very good. All right, we will go to city planner and commissioner reports. I don't have anything in particular other than perhaps a request for an update on where we are with our revisiting the, what's going on with Brother Benno's. There has been an upsurge in emails to, I'm on this chain now, which is fine because I, gives me kind of a reminder that that's out there and it kind of lets me know what's going on. And I always enjoy the photos that come with it. So, but where are, where are we headed next with this and about what is the timeframe roughly?
Certainly, thank you for the question, Chair Rosales. So we, the working committee composed of members of staff, members of OPD, members representing property owners in the business park and Brother Benno's themselves. We met about 10 days ago, again, to go over where we're at. At that meeting, Brother Benno's disclosed that they have hired security to be their present, professional security to be their present during business hours. So from 5:00 in the morning till about 7:00 p.m. at night, they'll have security there. We did still hear that there's still ongoing issues in the business park with homeless and transient activity. So we are ready to bring a report back to the Planning Commission at the next meeting of September 11th. For formal, we'll provide an update, again, of what's transpired since the 60 days have passed, since the last time the Planning Commission got an update on this, on this item. And we'll be asking the Planning Commission for formal direction to amend the CUP, the conditional use permit to add those four conditions of approval that the OPD has recommended, and also to modify an existing condition of approval where the police chief will have the authority and discretion to review the operations and security plan every six months rather than every 12 months. And finally, we recommend that perhaps the Brother Benno's working group or standing committee maybe meet more regularly, and that staff bring back updates every six months rather than every 12 months. So that's sort of where we're at with Brother Benno's.
Did you say, Sergio, is there going to be one more meeting before we get together?
I don't think the calendar has this meeting after the September 11th meeting.
So that's when we're going to bring it back here?
We're going to bring it back to the Planning Commission on September 11th.
Invites to that meeting, will those include all the tenants and/or the representatives in the business park? I mean, how do you get the word out, is I guess my question.
So we agendize it. We do have an email list of interested parties for this item that they'll get notification via email that the item will be in front of the Planning Commission on September 11th.
Okay, great.
We keep a working list of folks who are interested and express concerns or comments one way or the other.
Very good. And I believe tomorrow is a meeting here, is it a workshop on, is it the selection for the sand replenishment? Help me out with that one.
I'm not intimately familiar with that project, but there is, there may be a meeting. I know that our coastal administrator's been working on the sand retention project. There's been, I think, three design teams selected. I'm not familiar with there being a meeting tomorrow, but it's something certainly we could check in and.
No, I think there is, and I think it's here, and it's from 4:00 to 7:00, if anybody's interested.
If you find out, could you email?
I certainly can, yeah. If there's anything published, I will forward it to everyone, all the planning commissioners.
Yeah, I'm going to stop by because I'm interested to see what they say. Okay, Vice Chair Morsey, any report?
Yeah, two things. One, I can report to you, I'm sure you're going to be very glad to know, that the streetlight at 1942 South Pacific in that area, they're actually working on it. So thank you for all your work. And I guess the company that installed it's a solar light, and it really does, it's kept, you know, I've talked to the neighbors, the neighbors miss it because the knuckleheads have kind of come back. But now with that, you know, hopefully the light works, I think it's going to be good. But the problem I found out was the people that installed it, they're no longer in business or whatever, so the city's trying to handle it themselves. So I applaud the city for that, so thank you. And the other, the second thing was that I, I think it was last week, drove the site with one of the Oceanside Police Officers that presented before this dius. And I, same thing, Louise, when you and I walked it, the same thing is happening. And I think the only thing that's going to work there is, is, you know, in the construction business, it's not what you expect, it's what you inspect. And I think having somebody there that's inspecting these, you know, they'll come in, they'll cite people, they'll move their vehicles, and, you know, and then five days later, they're all back again. So in fairness to this industrial park, there has to be some kind of inspections that carry some teeth with it. That's what I noticed.
Sounds good, thanks. Commissioner Obama.
I was actually going to elaborate on that, but I don't think we can discuss that kind of stuff when we haven't publicly agendized it, right? So I don't think I want to go to my next comment, so we can talk about that later. But I guess as far as things to announce, I'm just going to kind of plug our California Surf Museum's gala coming up November 4th. The Surf Museum brings our tourists and visitors and residents to Oceanside and neighboring cities, another venue to kind of like enjoy the downtown. So it's our, it's the biggest fundraiser that they have, so if you're interested, November 4th. It's at Carlsbad, in St. Carlsbad, though.
In St. Carlsbad.
Well, we're going to hopefully, well, someday, we hope, when John Cornet gets to build his ocean camp, we hope, we'll have our galas there, then it'll be Oceanside.
So I'm going with John, too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Anthony.
I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Dodds?
Nothing to report.
Great, and city planner?
Thanks, Chair Rosales. So I'm just going to go over a couple upcoming items for both the Planning Commission and City Council. So the next meeting is scheduled for November 11th. We have, our schedule has two items that day. One will be a subdivision, proposed subdivision for 19 homes on Avocado Road. Some of you may be aware of the Cyclops Farm, the old Cyclops Farm site.
Yeah.
3.34 acre site. I'll be considering a tentative map, a density bonus, and a development plan. Similar to tonight, that project's very contentious, so we'll be here for a little while.
Yeah.
Also, that evening, we'll get an update on Brother Benno's and where we're at, and we'll be asking the Planning Commission for some direction, formal direction on amending the CUP. Upcoming on the meeting of September 25th, we have, we'll be, it'll be a consideration of a regular coastal permit at 1830 South Pacific Street for some exterior remodel and a small addition. And there also will be an update on our current efforts on where we're at today and what the kind of schedule is going to look like for the comprehensive general plan update we've been working on for over three years. So Russ Cunningham, our principal planner in charge of that project, will give a comprehensive update on where we're at and what's to expect in the next several months. Upcoming at City Council at the meeting of September 13th, the council will be considering four planning-related items. One of them will be a new single-family residence on, at 1515 South Myers. That site's located in the downtown district, it hasn't come to this body, but it's gone to the Downtown Advisory Committee, and it'll be going to council for final approval. Also on that meeting, the council will be considering a mixed-use project here in the downtown known as Sunset's 3.0, which is 180 units, mixed-use development up here, right up the street, just west of Horn and in between Clementine and, I'm sorry, west of Horn to the, to the alley and in between Pier V Way and Civic Center Drive. Also that evening, the council will be considering the proposed density cap for mixed-use projects in the downtown district. Currently, there are, it's unlimited density, and some of the consequences of pairing density bonus with unlimited density has led to some projects that some folks don't necessarily like. And then finally, and probably the thing I'm most proud to announce because we've worked really hard on it, we'll be taking forward the housing element for readoption by City Council. On August 18th, we received a letter from HCD telling us that our housing element is in compliance with state law. And so we'll be taking it forward for formal adoption, readoption by City Council, and then resubmitting to HCD for formal certification. So that's a big milestone in that effort. And then finally, on October 18th, the City Council will be considering two historic permits. They don't come to this body, but they're kind of unique. Historic permits for two single-family homes. One of them is located at 431 South Nevada Street, and the other one's located at 906 West Street. That concludes my update. They're just unique in their own special way.
In their own way.
They each have unique architecture.
So these are two, these are two properties. Yeah. They're two properties, and they're located in the city.
Yes.
But they're in a historic district?
They're not in a historic district, but they possess qualities that can render them historic.
So they're like a building that's actually going to be like what Christie Hawthorne and her group in the, in our, what is it, Historic Society has actually tagged these two residents as historic?
Not necessarily the Historic Society, but the property owners themselves submitted for local historic designation. And one of the benefits of that is that they can qualify for a Mills Act tax exemption, which takes off about $500 off your property tax bill, more or less.
Nice.
It's interesting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you didn't, very interesting.
Are you on, are you on the DAC?
Yeah.
Well, you should be giving us a little bit of a report once in a while. Not that I'm going to put you on the podium here or whatever, but I mean, that's part of your thing.
Okay, let me do that.
If you went to these meetings, you might kind of tell us a little kind of like background stuff.
On the DAC report, what we said, what Sergio just said, the density bonus is going to be, we're going to look at it.
Yeah, I like that.
Because some, some projects were over 100 units per acre, and they're going to, right? And we're going to now put a cap on that. I think.
That's good.
Is the plan to put 5,000 units in the downtown area, and we're about 2,500 now?
I could elaborate a little bit on that topic. Under the redevelopment plan, there was envisioned about 5,500 new residences in the downtown. To date, I think we've built about 2,300. We have another 1,300, 1,400 or so in the pipeline. One of the things that accompanies the density cap is an updated density bonus schedule for projects in the downtown district, for mixed-use projects in the downtown district. One of the goals of the effort is to increase affordability in these projects. So one tool that we have available to us, state density bonus law allows the city to be more generous with the density bonuses they grant. We just can't be more restrictive. So one of the strategies that we're utilizing is at the target affordability rate, so for as an example, under state density bonus law, 15% reservation for very low-income households grant you a 50% density bonus. So as an example, on a one-acre site at 100 units per acre, 15% would be 15 affordable units. So, and so to, of the projects that we're currently processing that are located in the downtown, the average density of those projects is about 175 units per acre. We're trying to still meet that 175 unit, an acre, a target that the development community has kind of honed in on. And so one strategy to do that is to grant that larger density bonus. As an example, if you set aside 15% for very low income, you get a 75% bonus rather than a 50% bonus, and therefore that renders us to that 175 dollar an acre target or goal that the development community has shown by the applications we're processing.
It's going to be like New York pretty soon.
Not quite New York density, but certainly dense for Oceanside.
It's going to be a good train situation, though. So we kind of have our own little like, you know, transit system.
All right, I think we're going to wrap this up. Thank you, we're adjourned.
We love our police. We're never going to be like New York.
Well, now they're having a hard time with all the immigrants.
Oh, my gosh, well.